And if there's any, ask everyone to please silence. There are cell phones. And if anyone needs to fill out a blue slip on the first floor, someone will get it up to us if you want to speak on an issue tonight. And I need Mr. Culler, Mr. Brain for the invocation and pledge.
Blessed be God, we just love you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings you laid upon each and every one of our lives, Father. We thank you for just keeping us safe, Father, during this period that we've gone through, Father. I pray, God, and I know in myself that I've learned a lot during this time, Father, that you set aside, even though it hasn't been a pleasant time, Father, for many, we just pray for them and lift them up. Father, I just ask that you be with us tonight as we make the decisions that please you, and we give you all the praise and glory. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir.
Here.
Mr. Andrew.
Here.
Bears.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantel.
Here.
Mr. Rutter.
Here.
Mr. Stelly.
Here.
Mr. Tremonti.
Here.
President.
Here.
President.
Thank you. Item four, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Bean.
Mr. President, we have two applications for consideration for liquor and beer permits and recommend approval of both.
No motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Bears. Mr. Bears, is there any discussion? Any objection that motions have carried? Item five, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated March 5, 2020. I have a motion by Mr. Afshar and a second by Mr. Bears. Is there any discussion? Any objection that motions have carried?
Move on six.
Item six.
Second.
Consideration of approving payments of all current invoices and advised regular monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Bears and a second by, I'm sorry, Mr. Andrew, and a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objection that motion carried? Item seven, consideration of adopting and ordnance approving the following resounding applications.
Second.
Application 5754 River Road in Ward Eight, resign from agriculture A1 to general commercial to allow commercial development auto-service shop. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barti.
Excuse me, Mr. to approve with conditions, correct?
To approve with conditions, yes. I need a motion to approve with conditions.
That's my motion, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Stelly, and I have a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is your mic on, Chris?
I'm somewhat familiar. I guess it is now. I'm somewhat familiar with this operation. It surprises me that, because this business just did not start there. It's been there for some time, and they don't have an occupational license.
Correct.
That's not good. And I, you know, I see that they voted, what was it, five against? And only three, four? That probably had something to do with it, I would imagine. Of course, now, the stipulation is that they're going to get an occupational license. I guess that's one of them. And I called today and kind of got a little bit of the background of what all went on. And evidently, there was a disgruntled family member that turned them in. But I believe, if I'm correct, Mr. Stelly, none of the neighbors really have a problem with it going on.
He doesn't any longer.
And I think that they evidently been good enough neighbors that nobody has a problem with it. So that was my only thing. I'm assuming that somebody with the staff or Mr. Crane's staff is going to make sure that they obtain that occupational license.
Yes, sir. If you need to answer.
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yes, we will.
You know, the only other thing I know when it comes to sales tax, I'm assuming if somebody doesn't have an exemption certificate and they're purchasing things and they're paying the tax, they really don't have to register. I mean, from what I understand. Is that correct, Mr. Crane?
You mean for an occupational license?
No, I'm talking about registering with the school board as being a business and paying your sales tax like you're supposed to and the state.
I would think they'd have to. They'd have to register.
But if they're not exempt and they're paying the tax upfront, I don't think that, I think they can get around that. Isn't that correct?
Well, whether, and Mr. Landry asked a question, whether you're an individual or a corporation, somebody's paying taxes if they're not exempt. But obviously, to pay from a corporation standpoint, there may be some tax benefits to that. But an individual purchasing items is still going to pay the tax.
Well, we're talking about sales tax, buying items for resale.
For the, for the sales of the services, yes, you're right. He would have to. The occupational license is the safeguard there.
Yeah. So once, once they do that, it's going to trigger.
Correct.
Because the school board is going to get a copy of that and they're going to say, hey, you haven't registered with the sales tax office. So that'll be covered.
Right. And of course, any services under the corporation's name, once you have a business, the documentation for the LOC, the corporation, whatever that might be, is another safeguarding there to make sure the taxes aren't being paid.
Right. Okay. So I'm good. I don't, I didn't mean to cause you a bunch of problems.
You beat that up, man.
I just want, I just want to make sure that it gets done right. I know you're paying yours, aren't you?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's fine. I'm good.
Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to add that, that Mr. Landry's comment that the Louisiana Department of Revenue as well, you also have to, you have to register with them. So that's part of sales tax.
Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
So I have a motion to approve with conditions, and that was by Mr. Stelly. Mr. Stelly made the motion, and the second was by Mr. Smith.
Mr. Barti.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Barti.
Mr. Barti, I'm sorry, Mr. Barti.
My fault.
Any other discussion? Any objection that motions have carried? Item seven, consideration of adopting and ordinance approving the following resounding, I'm sorry.
We just did that, Mr. President.
Item eight, I'm reading it. I'm sorry. Consideration of adopting and ordinance approving the following resounding application 5846 Tom May Bear Road in Ward Three, resign from light commercial to general commercial to allow commercial development in many warehouses. I have a motion to discuss by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain.
I'm sorry, Mr. Crane, but if you could come back up, I got a couple of questions for you. This has been, I know, on the agenda for a little while, and I got a phone call like two hours ago. So, you know, but the gentleman had never seen the sign. He lives kind of behind the property, and so he never really travels that, that direction.
Okay.
And I think in the stipulations, and I've talked to the developer, the property owner is not, and at the time I talked to this gentleman, I was with the understanding that the property owner was the one that was doing the development. But the property has been sold, or this piece of the property has been sold, and there's, the people that bought the property are doing the development. I think it's the Sarvers. Is that correct, Mr. Crane?
I think so, yes.
Okay. And, and the concern is that there's, there are some drainage issues there.
Okay.
And the person that calls me does understand, they're not necessarily against the project, and they do understand, once it's developed, hopefully, the drainage is going to get better. But I just wanted on the record, from what I understand, are they going to send y'all a plan that engineering is going to take a look at?
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be required to submit.
Okay. And I know Tim and his staff will look at it, and I'm assuming, from what I've been told, all this water is going to now flow to Tom May Bear Road.
We don't have the plan. I don't see the plan here, but it could, I guess.
I mean, it's the state route, so I would assume that's where it's going to go. That's where we need to make sure that it's going to go.
That's what the property is fronting on.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, and I say that, I guess I can't make that stipulation because it's going to be based off of the science and not just where I randomly want it to go, I'm sure, but.
It's going to be, it's going to have to be engineered.
Right. And we certainly, we don't want it to go on the folks that live on that, on Red Davis Road. That's where we don't want it to go. Because there's already an issue there now, and, and it's undeveloped. So it, actually, if it went that way, it would only get worse. So we, I'm sure the engineering is going to take care of it. I just want to talk about it to make darn sure that we don't impact those neighbors to the north of the project. And I know we can't do anything with the rest of the property because that's not coming before us tonight.
That's correct.
All right. That's all. I'm good. So I would make a motion that it be accepted with conditions.
Got it. We have a motion to approve with conditions.
If I could get a second.
By Mr. Landry.
And we, we got a second by Mr. Brain, and we got questions. Mr. Bears.
We, we spent a good time making sure that wasn't going to happen, Chris. On that, is that, is that what, I guess when we overhauled all those ordinances and zero impact and all that, is that, so our, our stuff is designed now to catch all of his concerns?
It, it is.
Correct.
The drainage ordinance is, it's been revamped to catch some of it, most of it. There are some waivers that someone could apply for. But engineering, they have the right, I mean, they can look at that. If there's a problem area, they still can review it and make sure that it's, it's being properly drained.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wouldn't really ask you to make this part for myself. I was, I was not going to speak with it all. I was just wanting to be clear for the person that called me. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. Markantel.
Yeah, just a question. Mr. Crane said, if we approve something and then later down the road, the developer comes in with a waiver, does that come, if it's something, a major waiver, does it come back in front of us?
No. What it is, if you read the conditions, the way we have the conditions and the way the ordinance reads, is that a runoff management plan is required unless appropriate waivers are given.
Oh, okay.
So the engineering department, under the ordinance, there is a provision for waivers. However, they also have, the engineering department can say, no, we're not granting a waiver. We're going to, you know, we have a problem area here, and you're going to have to achieve drainage so that you don't impact the off-site drainage or our system, you know. So they, they have that, that's in the ordinance. They have to do that.
Any other discussion? Any objection that motion carries? Item nine.
Move on nine.
Consideration of adopting and ordinance approving the following resounding application 3406 Myrtle Springs Rural in Ward Four, resign from mixed residential to recreation vehicle park to allow recreation vehicle park four spaces. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Andrew. A motion to approve with conditions. Is there any discussion? Any objection that motion carries? Item 10.
Move to adopt.
Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submittal of the CARES Act application to the state of Louisiana for the Coronavirus Relief Fund. I have a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objection that motion carries? Item 11, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement authorizing the tax assessors to contract for homestead exemption audit services. I have a motion by Mr. Afshar and a second by Mr. Bears. Is there any discussion?
I have a motion to discuss.
Okay. Mr. Bears.
I know that there were some questions about this as far as the scope. Can we, Mr. Bean, you want to take a shot at that? Tell us what that's going to look like?
Yes. So what I would like to do, Mr. Bears, if I could, ask Alberto Galan to come to the podium. He's been working directly on this, and I believe he can answer all your questions. We do, if needed, have the representative from the company that's going to be contracted and questioned if it gets to that level. But I think Alberto probably has the answers you need.
Alberto Galan, administration. Do you just kind of want a general overview of what this looks like?
Yes. I mean, what, they got a full staff down there, don't they?
Yes.
What is this going to achieve?
Yeah. So the, what they have is proprietary software that basically goes in, looks at all of the homestead exemptions, the disabled freezes, as well as the veterans freezes that also cause exemptions. What they do is they audit all those properties, and what they're able to do is identify properties that are unlawfully claiming homestead exemption. Those examples can be anything from a succession that just, that exemption carries over. It can be somebody that's primary residences in Florida and, or in Baton Rouge, but claiming homestead exemption here. Some of these are accidental. Some of these are more intentional. What the software is able to do is identify those properties, provide a report to the tax assessor's office, so that the tax assessor's office can then go and, well, they have a verification process. So once they identify those properties, they go through another process to verify, to ensure that those, those are indeed unlawfully claimed, homestead exemptions are disabled, or veterans freezes. And then the assessor's office can then take that information and provide any necessary reports for any collection. The sheriff's office needs authorization from the police jury in order to withhold and remit any, any costs associated or fees associated with the service and distribute any additional revenues for any of the taxing entities.
Okay. So what's going to trigger these audits?
So basically, well, once this agreement is executed, from what I understand, they can go and, they've already created a sample to ensure that there's, that these things exist and, and that they exist in the parish. So they, they basically, they sampled a certain number of properties. They audited those numbers, and they, they identified unlawful exemptions. And so, so they go in there and just do it.
It's not, it's not just a dragnet. Everybody's getting audited. It is, it is
Only.
in this, that fit these criteria.
Correct. Only those, only those that fit this criteria. So if, if it's not a homestead exemption, if it's not a disabled, if it's not a veteran freezes, it is not, it will not be applicable.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Andrew. Mr. Andrew.
Yes, Mr. Galan. This, similar to what Mr. Bears was asking, but what's, what's the rationale? What's driving this?
Sure. So Wendy Aguilar actually approached the sheriff's office and us to, with this, with Michael Sarver, who's with the company and, who's here as well, with this service. They're operating in multiple parishes across the state. We've spoken with a lot of the parishes that are utilizing the service. They're very pleased with it. They're able to identify additional revenues, that everybody pays their fair share of taxes the way, the way that everybody else is assessed. So, you know, it can, over, over years, you can identify millions of dollars worth of, worth of additional revenues that otherwise we would not be collecting. And the software allows us to do that.
So you mentioned maybe some people trying to work the system. Do they have, we have an idea of the percentage of that in the parish of, of what that number may be?
We do not. And again, it's not, it's not always intentional. It could just be a succession that carries over, and the exemption just carries over like that. So it's not always intentional. We do not have a percentage. But once they're able to run that software, we can certainly report back to you with, with numbers that quantify that. But again, the, the company does not collect anything until the, until the taxing entities collect revenues.
And what's the fee associated with this?
It depends on, on the property, property assessment. So when certain, certain properties that have a nominal, nominal value assessed to it, the company doesn't collect on, on some of those. But there is an, there's an algorithm that they use, and for that, I would ask the, Michael Sarver to provide more detail on how that is calculated. But it's a one-time deal, so once that property is identified and that fee is taken out of whatever's collected, moving forward, it's on, it's corrected on the rolls, and they don't collect on anything beyond that. So it's a one-time per property period moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, actually, they're, they're using our information. I mean, the information's coming from the parish.
Well, if, if we're going to ask about the software.
Public information is there. They have a software program that's putting it together in such a way to identify these properties. You can't just buy the software?
We can't. It's proprietary software that they have.
Everything's for sale.
Well, they're patented.
Whoever this guy is selling this deal, he bought it from somebody.
No, he, he has a patent on it. I can have him explain it. He's downstairs or outside.
I don't necessarily need that. So you, so you telling me if it's a, if it's a very piece of property of low value, there may not be a charge at all?
Correct.
And then after that, there's some formula that's going to come up with the price?
Correct.
So you can't tell me it's a certain percentage, nor can you tell me it's a flat dollar amount, neither?
I'd ask Mr. Sarver to come in to answer specific percentage on how the algorithm works or how the formula works. But from what I understand, for the nominal properties, you're not going to collect, they wouldn't collect anything. But anywhere between, it can be anywhere between three and 10% of that.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
I don't want you, you know, I'm not looking for, hey, okay, they found it, and now you owe him 75% of what he found.
No, no, no.
Or any kind of deal like that.
No, no, no. It's a, it's, it's somewhere between three and 10% from what I understand.
And, and I'm going to throw this.
We had the opportunity for the gentleman to come up. Have you offered him that yet?
Yeah.
I'm going to throw this out. I don't have necessarily a problem with it. I think you've given me enough information. But while we're on the subject, I'm going to tell you there was, this happened a few years ago, that engineering was looking at getting some software, and I don't know if it was, I think it was the LIDAR-type technology, that we wanted to do a cost share with the assessor's office. And that software could see, it can see through trees. And so you have a lot of people that will build structures, and they never came and got a permit, and therefore, you're not taxing that additional value or any of that. So we were going to use it for that purpose with the assessor's office. And then engineering could also use it. They were going to take a lot of measurements and things to keep people from physically going out in the field concerning drainage issues. And then that just kind of never happened. And it was not that expensive of a software. So we definitely need to look at that again. And this, and I don't know if you remember this, Brian, or not. I'd got involved in a little bit, and I know Tim Connor had reached out to, to the assessor's office, and I don't remember right now what the issues were. But long as we're buying software well, in this case, you're not. But that's something that really needs to be done.
Yeah. We can certainly explore that, but this one is just specific to.
And you know, it was kind of one of those, we were going to get quite a bit of benefit out of it, but it wasn't to the point that, you know, well, if we're paying for it all ourselves, then Tim kind of felt like, you know, if, if multiple agencies could use it, it would without a doubt be worth it. But, you know, I don't, I don't know what the reasons were that they weren't interested in it. But if we could, Brian, would y'all please revisit that and let's try to see what, what's going on?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Hayes.
Alberto, do you know who picked out these three target areas? Veterans, disabled folks, and the homestead exemptions?
That is what they, that is what their, their software is specialized to do. So it's focused on those, those exemptions. So that is what the service offers.
So they basically look at the roll sheets and just pull out the names and go alphabetical down the list to audit?
They, their, their software just goes in, takes, takes the exemptions, and then they're able to identify duplicate, any duplications, or identify a lot of, a lot of duplications. And based on those duplications, they're able to pull data and make assessments and determine whether or not they're the actual unlawful exemptions.
And the assessor's office does not have a vehicle to do that now?
Currently, no, sir.
So this is a void that is going to be filled by this gentleman and his invention?
Absolutely, yes.
At a cost of three to 10% of whatever he finds?
Correct, yeah. Just depending on, on what the property is assessed.
So we don't know specifically what the cost is. And what really sticks in me is veterans freezes. Why are we attacking those guys? Is this a big problem with the tax assessment?
If it's a legitimate veterans freeze, it stays on the, on the books as is. It's not even, it wouldn't even be, be flagged, or it would just, it would just pass through the system. It's, whenever somebody's unlawfully claiming that veterans freeze. So for example, if that particular person were to pass away for whatever reason, and the succession, that property transfers to a family member, then that family member can no longer claim that veterans freeze.
Yes.
Because that veteran no longer lives there. So that, in those instances, it would be corrected on the rolls. But, but if it's a legitimate claim and exemption, it legitimate claim and exemption, it would not be touched.
Are we having a problem with that currently?
With veterans freezes?
Yeah.
The software would identify, but I think the homestead exemption is the bigger issue, is the, it would be the biggest qualifier.
Okay. Mr. Hayes, if I could just get you to hold for just one second.
Mr. President, these are very good questions. Just to let you know, we've asked Wendy Aguilar to come up and the representative from the company, but let me try to take a shot, Mr. Hayes, at your question. I don't, I think it's simply because there are, whatever legal exemptions have been added, they're not going after certain groups and not others. These are ones that are in the law and they're just trying to find out where they are not being complied with, whether it's unintentional, intentional, they don't get into that. Some, some are better than others, meaning like Mr. Landry brought up, we, over the years, you've got companies that say, hey, we can do this. Here, this one, that's why we checked with a lot of different parishes. It's, it's more of a proven thing that's been around to simply do something that if you're choosing to, you probably, Wendy, like all of us, has limited staff and you don't want to go on a fishing expedition just saying, hey, who's not following the law? But if you had a service that was specific to that, it, I think it's just a really common sense thing, but it's not targeting groups, it's simply those are legal state exemptions that are there, not because anybody's going after, say, veterans or seniors, that's just because that's what the law says. And I think the fact that you have so many parishes that give us a little comfort that this is not just right out of the gate and the substantial amounts that are there that frankly, you know, everybody who's a taxpayer, I think would, it's a fairness quotient, I guess. It's not, nobody's getting picked out, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Beam, Mr. Beam, the gentleman's, Mr. Beam, the gentleman's here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, would you state your name and business address for the record, please?
Mike's, Mike's had a question for a while.
He had a question.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mike, can we get him to speak first on, on a couple of things and then we're going to come back to you?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mike Sarver with Assessor Systems, I'm the president and CEO. We're based in Covington, Louisiana and yes, we provide the auditing services for any domicile-related exemption discounts that people get for living in residential home. Any questions?
Well, the question I had was, how long will the agreement last? Is it like ongoing or just a one-time thing?
Yeah, it's, it's a one-time audit. We identify, we take the tax roll and yes, software is a component of it, but also, one of the main components is the data that's fed into the software. And so, we spent many years, almost a decade now, working across Louisiana, building and improving the system, but one of the main components is the, and the expense of it, is the data that's fed into the software, which can digest hundreds of thousands of records in an instant and be able to help identify what looks like a potential violation. And so, our researchers then take it from there and do online research that kind of corroborates what's going on. And so, we have credentialed access to public, private and governmental and non-public information in order to make sure that we have the right person that we're doing research on, so social security death master file records. So, we'll find out if someone had passed away and they're still receiving an exemption, obviously, they don't live in the home anymore and so, we'll go to the clerk of court's records online and we'll do a quick abstract of title to be sure that perhaps there was a succession, passed the property down to the next person, or maybe there was never one done. And so, oh, sorry, but anyway, that, we'll do, finish that research and then we document that in our software and provide that information to the assessor, whether it's a homestead exemption only or whether it's a homestead exemption that also has carried perhaps a senior freeze that's artificially tethered to a, an assessed value that might be 20, 50, $100,000 below the actual market, which is a, is a lot of revenue that's being missed by the parish and all the taxing bodies. So, we identify that, provide that to the assessor and her staff goes through and vets everything, takes what we've given them and they do their own investigation on top of that to be certain that what is out there is, is accurate. And then for those, those violations that look like they're not qualified, notice is sent to them and they have all due process afforded by law to come in, make protests, clean up any issues, clarify anything and if it's a valid exemption, it's restored, it's never been taken away and there's no new tax bill for them and they have their exemption. If it's a violation, then from there, they would need to have the tax bill revised and then the roll is corrected that way and it promotes fairness across the entire parish.
But any collections of these?
Hold on, hold on, I got, Mr. Hayes, you had the floor first, I'm going to go back to you. Okay. Couple of quick things. You are, the ultimate goal of your company is to offer this service throughout all the parishes in the state of Louisiana?
Well, that would be great. We've done almost a dozen now and so, we've audited approaching half of the state of Louisiana of homestead exemptions and so, to date, I believe, the tally continues to grow each year, but we're, have recovered upwards of over $20 million in tax revenue across the state from Caddo, St. Tammany, to Beauregard, St. Bernard, St. John, Livingston, Ascension, so on.
Are you at liberty to tell us what Caddo, what revenue was generated in Caddo Parish through your mechanism?
So, it's growing each year because now the tax rolls are corrected, those people are on the rolls paying their bills, but right now, I would estimate that they, the gross recovery is for that parish alone is probably over 3.5 to 4 million dollars at the very least, if not higher. And when you're talking about the fee earlier, it is a flat fee and so, we don't, it's not a contingency like percentage of whatever's collected, it's a flat fee. So, in this parish, homestead exemption, you get up to 75,000, it's fully exempt. Based on the mileage rate here, that saves someone, red light button. Why don't we make it green? Can you hear me still?
You can use probably his mic for a minute.
So, in, in this parish, it should save someone, I think it's about $700 or $800 a year for homestead exemption, does that sound about right? So, with that, our fee for a violation that's in that price range would be $250. And if it were a smaller home that was in violation and maybe the revenue recovered was only 300 bucks, our fee, the contract has a kick-down provision where we go half that, so we're 125 bucks. And if it's below that and you only raise, you recover 100 bucks from someone because it's a very small home, or maybe it's a manufactured home or something along those lines, there's no fee at all. So, as it shakes out, when all things are considered and some things we don't know right now, so if you find a senior freeze where the senior died 10 years ago in Michigan where their home really was and a relative is living in the subject property, maybe one of the 14 grandkids with no succession and it was artificially frozen at an assessed value of $75,000, in today's market, it's 125,000. We really don't know the total amount of what the difference is because we don't know what the current market is, we don't get into assessed values, we don't get into appraisals, we just get into where do people live? And if it differs from what the assessor has, we give that information to them and let them call the ball from there.
Who writes you the check?
The tax collector as the proceeds are recovered and that's a partnership that we formed with Software and Services, which is the provider of software to the assessor for their daily, day-to-day operations and they also provide the software to the tax collector. We formed a partnership with them so they can sync the data between the two departments so the flow of funds and tracking of the parcels that are a result of this audit is done easily, effectively and efficiently every month. And so, the collector gets a report, hits a button at the end of each month and can give the new money to the, to the school board, to, and to all the different taxing bodies and then net out our fee based on those parcels and the tiered fee schedule that went along with them.
Mrs. Sarver, whose responsibility was this prior to your, your company being formed and you coming up with this idea? Was it the tax assessor's responsibility and their staff to do exactly what you're talking about doing?
Right, so the tax assessors and property appraisers depend, whatever state it is, is the, the one in charge of managing the, or administering assessments and also exemptions. The limitation is, is they don't have access to national databases like we do and so, our company's sole existence is to buy that data at scale and then apply that and be able to work with the various parishes and counties to, you know, leverage that information and help them do what they couldn't do individually because it would be too expensive.
Basically, you're offering a service that they should have been doing for what you say is a cheaper cost than what they are now paying to do it without you. Is that it?
Well, it would be impossible for them to buy the data and the quantity that they would be buying it for at the cost, it would be, it would be very expensive to do that. We have a contract, a multi-year contract with the state of Louisiana Department of Public Safety to get the driver's license database. Every month, we get an update of the entire state. We possess that information. Secretary of State voter records, we get the entire state every year, been doing that for a decade. So, we buy, are buying this data and housing it and then we go out to third-party providers who give us property record information. So, for your homestead here in, in Calhoun, when we do the examination, we'll be able to find the condo in Pensacola or if you've got a home, a town home in California, we'll find that because our data providers will share that and the software is able to receive that information on a large scale. If she tried to do it on a one-off basis or if any assessor tried to perform an audit on a one-off basis without the system that we've developed, it would be impossible just because of the size of the 50,000 homesteads you already have in this parish, it would take forever and it would be, you'd be running on a treadmill that's going faster than you can run.
I appreciate your answers, thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
What's a staff at the tax assessor's office right now, do you know?
Actually, I would prefer Wendy Aguilar is here, I would like her to answer because she can do that. Can I just, one quick thing, one of your questions, Mr. Hayes, just for information, you asked who does the check go to? The tax, the tax collector in Calhoun Parish is the sheriff's office, just from out of information. Tax assessor Wendy Aguilar does the valuations, but the sheriff collects it. That's just an administrative answer, I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Mr. Hayes, while Miss Aguilar is coming up, I'm going to go to Mr. Burley.
Yeah.
Mr. Sarver, one more thing on the cost, maybe I didn't understand, but you said there was a point where it's broken down to $100 and 250, whatever. What are those levels?
Right, so 400, if, if the recovery from the audit for a parcel is, let's say, $400 or more, over $400, our fee is $250. The average is going to be in the 800 range because of your mileage rate and the homestead value, that sort of thing. So, it's always a fraction of, we never get paid more than what you're collecting. When it goes below 400 and between 150 and $400 that is recovered as the result of the invalid exemption, our $250 fee goes down to, cuts in half to 125 bucks. So, we're always only a fraction of what is collected after it's collected. And below 150, if you collect 149, our fee is zero, so that's free. So, in the aggregate, our average will run, if you want to call it a percentage, in the 30 to 35% range of what is gross collected for the benefit of all the taxing bodies, that would be what would approximate to what our fee would be if it were in a percentage.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Mr. Stelly.
Maybe I misunderstood here. At the end of the day, this actually doesn't cost the parish anything.
Correct.
Because all the fees are going to be collected by the sheriff, which are going to be assessed by the assessor. Whatever fees there are involved are going to come from the property owner, it's not going to come from.
We find nothing, you pay nothing.
That's right. So, basically, it costs us nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Stelly. Mr. Landry.
And if you want to say it costs something, it only costs the first year. It's only the first year, after that, then you keep it all and you're keeping something that you would have never found anyway.
Yeah, the return on investment or the percentage of our, our fee is only based on just looking at that current year, but if you look into the future, the lasting effects of what this program was this first year, that percentage drops even further because we don't participate in future revenue that you're enjoying.
Thank you, Mr. Landry, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Beam.
Sounds like a deal.
He just answered the question.
Okay. Mr. Landry, you had.
Mr. Sarver, I asked a question earlier and Mr. Galan answered it, but what, what is the percentage of the different parishes that you audit? What is the percentage of, of funds that you, you find?
So, typically, in Louisiana, well, we've identified across all the parishes we've worked with, is the violation rate that typically hovers on the low side, 2.5%, 3%, high side, you know, 6 or so, up in there. So, there's a range from the sample work that we've done and the, and the audit analysis that we've already done for this parish, you're on the low side, your assessor's doing a good job, but we still think at 3.5% is probably where we'll, we'll settle in. The sample indicated 3.8%. You'd probably settle in at a, at a smaller, smaller number, but in the low 3s probably is where you end up.
So, where would you say the largest area when, when looking at violators or the violations, where is the largest group when you're auditing that you would categorize as the, the largest area that, that you find as, you know, violating the, the exemptions?
Okay, so the, the most common cause for why someone would be invalid that's currently getting an exemption, one of the main reasons would be deaths that are unknown to the assessor that perhaps someone has passed away years ago in a different state and that sort of thing. And then duplicate exemptions where they've got one, husband has one here, wife has another one in a different parish or across town and, and it's a multiple marriage type of thing, so.
One, one final question, I guess, and this may be for Mr. Beam. How are the revenues divided up once, you know, with this percentage, 3.5, I mean, where, where does, is it the city, the municipalities get it or they're just, is it the school board, the police jury or who receives these revenues?
Mr. Landry, it will be the entities that would have gotten it had they been properly assessed, meaning whatever the rates were. So, for example, if it were a property in Moss Bluff, it would be for any property taxes levied in Ward 1 proportionate to that. It's not, it's done at the same thing that you would have gotten if the person had done it right.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is Miss Aguilar still there?
Yes, I'll be down here.
Yes, down with Mr. Sarver. Yes, sir, Mr. Sarver, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. You can hang.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can wait right outside.
In the hall.
Hello, Miss Aguilar, say your name and business address for the record, please.
Wendy Aguilar, Calhoun assessor, 1011 Lake Shore Drive, Suite 101, Lake Charles.
Thank you, and I thank Mr. Hayes, Ms. Hayes.
Welcome, Ms. Aguilar, thank you for coming out here.
Thank you for having me.
How many, how many folks do you have in your department right now? Employees?
We have 22 employees.
And how has this been handled previous to what we're hearing here tonight?
Our staff does investigate any issues that we discover as far as duplicate homesteads or erroneous homesteads and we do that on a daily basis. What the software would give us the ability to do is do that en masse and we don't have that ability right now.
Would you have to hire an employee or two or three to do this?
I would have to hire a temporary employee to do it for a short period of time, let's say, a year and then let that employee go because there might not be another position available to them if I, if I did that.
Okay. Do you feel that there is a glaring need for this in your operation?
I think anytime I get a phone call from a taxpayer or a property owner who brings to my attention that their neighbor isn't paying their fair share, there's always a need, absolutely. You wouldn't want your neighbor living next door to you to have two homesteads if you can't have two homesteads. So, anytime that there is someone who is, whether they're intentionally or unintentionally violating the law, there's a need to correct the issue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second.
Motion. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. We had a motion.
We had a motion for the...
Agreement.
Now, we have a motion to accept by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any other discussion? Any objection? That motion will carry. Thank you, Ms. Aguilar.
You're very welcome. Y'all have a good evening.
You, too. Item twelve, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a sub-award agreement with the Louisiana Workforce Commission Community Service Block Grant to provide services and programs in association with the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any other questions? Any discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submitted of a grant application to the yes Department of Justice for the fiscal year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program Solicitation Grant. I have a, by Mr., I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Y'all fight hard tonight, Mr. Barris.
Trying to get fifteen minutes of my life back.
Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carry. Item fourteen.
Motion for a question.
Consideration of adopting a resolution approving amendment to the professional service contract for the North Perkins Ferry Road Bridge Replacement Project. I have a motion to discuss by Mr. Ashar and a second by Mr. Smith, and I got Mr. Smith. No, that's Mr. Markantel. I'm sorry, Mr. Markantel.
Yeah, I just have one, one question. If we have a contract, you know, for, for a bridge replacement, all, all the contracts I've ever dealt with, why do we have this coming in front for the whole jury to load on? For the engineers, they able to make, you know, additional services in a contract? That's normally written in a contract.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess, Mr. Beam, I'll...
Generally speaking, and if, if necessary, I might, I might ask Mr. Bruce to answer that, but in this particular case, I'd have to know a little more details, but to your general question, Mr. Markantel, you might, you might be, it's a standard contract to replace a bridge, but they may find that the approaches were maybe not as stable as they thought, and it may require a little more engineering work. And that, that's typically what this is. I, I will say, I don't know on this exact one, or if it's been a long time and we've delayed the project and maybe the rates have changed in a couple of years. It could be anything, but that's a general answer. It's not required every time.
I'm good. And that motion was by Mr. Ashland, and I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Any objection? That motion carry. Item fifteen, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the old Highway Ninety Boat Ramp Project, DB 2019 FM 141, as substantially complete. Mr. Beam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna take a moment. Sometimes, once in a while, we go through items on an agenda, they're very routine, and they don't get talked about much. And sometimes, it's, I think it's helpful to stop and just say it because it's, it's a good thing. This is an example. Old Highway Ninety Boat Ramp, which is more glamorously called the Burnout Bridge Boat Launch, for you new guys. This is a heck of a story. It's been a very big challenge, and it's finished now, it's heavily used, and it goes back to the March 2016 floods. And so, I asked Dean Kelly, Facility Management Director, just to show a few pictures and talk about it for, so you'll fill in a few blanks for those of you who may not be familiar with it, and I just think it's a good news story that needs talking about. So, if, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask Mr. Kelly to come to the podium, just give a quick overview.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, name and department for the record.
Beam and Dean Kelly, Director of Facility Management. And we'll start out with a map image. Brian and I had a conversation earlier today, and he told me a little bit about when he first started with the parish, and some of the conversations you had with folks that weren't quite sure where the old burnout bridge was. So, you know, the old Highway Ninety right-of-way, when it crossed into the, into Texas, it was an old timber pile bridge many, many years ago, and when it was abandoned, that gave us a location for a boat launch, and there came the name. Ultimately, later, after it was banned and it was burned, and so, there's the name. During the, the flood of 2016, the amount of water that came through there eroded that little peninsula. It, it really washed an awful lot of land away. There ended up being, just on this picture that we're showing, right in the, at the end of the launch, there was actually a little whirlpool there, and it eroded a, a huge hole back up underneath the launch pad itself, the, the concrete launch. So, immediately after the flood, we went in there with the help of Public Works and our staff, we made the place safe again, we added rock so that the community could start launching boats and use it safely. And with the help of FEMA, we, we worked our way through that process and put together the bid package to get to the project where we are today. And one of the special things about this is, you know, when you're dealing with the peninsula, it continues to take erosion, and, you know, you wanna try and mitigate that any chance that you get. And that's one of the challenges FEMA gives us every time we have a loss and we go through that process, they want us to mitigate against future loss. So, what we did in this project is we actually encapsulated the entire end of that peninsula with vinyl sheet pile wall. And we turned that wall back in at the launch itself, so if that were to happen again with that type of current, we will not have as bad of, you know, we won't lose, lose land again like we did before. As with anything, it's, it's taken a little while to get us to this point. We've gone through multiple reviews with the Corps of Engineers to get us to this point. But I believe now that it's completed, we have a launch and a, a small park there that everybody can be proud of. The new wharfs are, are decked with Trex decking, that's a recycled product. You can see here a, a final view of it as it stands today. So, tonight, with your action, we will accept this as complete, and the launch will open Saturday morning.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Okay. I, I need a motion, I had a motion to discuss with, from Mr. Barris, was making a motion, and a second was Mr. Stelly. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna thank Dean and, and his staff, Public Works, all those guys. This was a mess. I, I, you know, I think that's a soft statement, but, you know, people, people, I got the question a lot throughout the whole, the whole four years, you know, why we need that boat launch, things like that. That, you don't understand, if you don't get the phone calls for this place, I mean, that is a very widely-used boat launch. And also, think about it, too, for like wildlife and fisheries, things like that, that is a very, it's a, it's a, it's, well, the only access is that far south of the interstate and that far west. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's got, it's got a lot of, a lot of good things are, are, come from that place. They did a great job. I, you know, it's no secret, I want folks to take care of this place. I had, I, I, I was asked to, to give a quote, and I want the folks that use this place, I want them to take ownership of it and treat it like it's theirs. If you see somebody tearing it up, it's in a very, very remote area, so I would hope that everybody will, will, will take ownership of this place and, and just, you know, let's, let's take care of it, because it is a real nice place, and, you know, we, we wanna, we want it to be there for a long time. So, again, Dean, I appreciate you guys, the contractor, the contractor worked in probably some of the craziest conditions I've heard a contractor have to work under, but, I mean, he, he did a great job. I think it was Keeler Construction, they did a great job. So, it looks great, so I hope everybody enjoys it. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Barris. Any other discussion?
Any objection? Thanks, Mr. Dean, that's a great job. Beautiful park. I'm sorry, Mr. Beam.
I just wanna make sure, I heard motion to discuss, but was it to approve?
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, not, not quite, not quite. I have a point of personal. I have an, I have an announcement. Thanks, Mr. Dean. I have an announcement to make, that throughout the COVID-19 period, the police jury and our departments have continuously evaluated additional things we could do to lessen the risk of transmitting the virus. One of those things which I approved of today is that committee night meeting, which are the Public Works and the Agenda Committee meeting that occurred during the last week of each month, will effectively today be suspended until further notice, when conditions are more favorable to returning to our regular meeting setup. So, just wanted everyone to know that, and also the public to know that. And is there anything else? I need a, I need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second to adjourn.